Sir. Oh. Can you hear me? Hey, you you can hear me, bro? Guys. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I'm I'm just gonna assume you can at this point, bro. Let me just uh get to work. So. Yeah, I see liquidity down here. So like. The banks, they could run down there. But then again, bro. I I don't really think so. Because today. This the trade I was in today, bro. If I draw like a low right here. And a high right here. And remember, this move is inside of what I was already trading with then. Okay, but yeah, this move is what I was already trading within, so. I'm just mark this as a gray line. And another gray line. So today, bro. I use the field. To basically make sure that it was still within that move. And I tried to let it. Come out of this field, but it didn't make it. Since it didn't make it out of this field, I caught the reversal, bro. And the reversal was like. I think I saw it break like right here or something, and then I called a pullback. This is on EU. I'm I'm gonna show you in a minute. Matter of fact, I'm gonna show you right now. On EU, yeah, so on EU, I think whatever indicator that is you got, bro. Where it like kept bouncing, it kept riding up. Right here where it had this big candle that broke this structure, that's a break of structure, and that's really a that's really a change of character when it broke right here, so. Me zoom in. When it had its change of character right here. I'll mark this as red. When it broke it, it had to retest. These are the scalps. These are really the scalps you be looking at, bro, so. When I draw a field. And I'm drawing the field from this high point. Because remember, this whole candle is what changed this character. So you draw the field from like this high down to this low where it stopped it. And then you look and see where it comes back to. If I go to the three minute. This your territory. When I come to the three minute. The field, remember, bro, this pink line is fifty percent. So. I'm assuming that. As long as it comes back within this fifty percent line. Then I'm good. And since I'm scalping, bro, I don't really, you you could look over here for structure, and that is true, like. This technically is a structured point right here. This very strong wig right here. I would draw like a white line. I use white lines to identify rejection. And then like, yeah, that's a good entry point. So. When I pull up the trade that I had today, bro. That was this. That was the exact that was the exact trade. I just got it late. This is I was in the fucking uh. Plaza shit. But when it went down, that was for the wind, bro. And this purple line. Is the fib on a bigger timeframe, because. If you zoom it, I say let's go to like to the one hour. On a one hour, this was like a big break of structure. So I felt like even if I sold it, I couldn't sell it all the way down here breaking these lows, like you gotta know. When to get out on some shit. And I saw this is very decent structure, so I was like, if if any place is a good place to get out is right here. And what do you know, as soon as it hit TP, it went the other way. So with that being said, bro. I need to figure out what's going what's going on with today. Let me hide this. And that's what's complicated. If you got any questions, bro, I ain't gonna lie, you gonna have to drop it like in the uh. In the chat, I don't even I don't even know how it's gonna work really. Go ahead and take it in the chat. Alright, cool. Yeah, don't don't drop it in the chat, just say it to me. But yeah, uh. So for today. So I'm seeing it ride up consistently, bro. And right now. This is like his lowest point. This was his highest point. If it keeps going up, bro. I would expect something like this. Let's see, path. Probably come down here. Probably go up here. Something like that. Because this all down here is still structured, bro. On top of that, if I draw the field. If I draw the field from this low. Which was like yesterday. And I draw it up. So like, okay. It didn't even come, it didn't even come back that far. Oops, oops. Yeah, it didn't even it didn't even come back that deep yet. So I assume that. This is like a fake out. This is like some people, you know, who think it's gonna keep going up. They gotta fake them out, drive it down here, and then eventually work their way back up. This may not be tomorrow, but. You know. It's just my assumption. But I'm not jumping in now, bro, because I need like, I need London and New York to actually build up. Or I make like a sudden move or something. But this is how you use the field, bro, so. Like I said, as long as it has like fifty percent room enough to come back, then technically is valid. And you can use the field on like different like timeframes and stuff. As long as you use it in the appropriate manner, like. This field that I got right here. This is for this whole move. So. If I'm thinking that it's gonna come back here, it would be kind of like smart to like make my trade like back to this light line, if I wanted to like settle off, but. I don't know how I don't know how it's looking right now, bro. And if I don't know how it's looking, I'm just not getting in it. This one look good. This one look a little more decent. I think because of earlier, okay, this makes some sense. Just make a lot of sense, bro. I'm not gonna lie to you, so. Hold on, let me make sure you ain't saying nothing. Okay, bet. Oh. What's about to say? So today, like I was saying, these gray lines. This is assuming that it wanted to keep buying up, because when it was buying up, bro. It was like a low right here, a higher, a low right here, and it didn't come no lower yet, but in between. Of it not coming lower yet. You got like a low right here, high right here, low right here, high right here, low right here, high right here, low right here, high up there, and you follow that same path. But it's been stuck in this little gray range. For. Basically, two days, bro. It's been stuck between here and here. It stayed right there all yesterday. This is what I caught. And I really caught it because I saw it that smaller change of character by like look. But by seeing this. Let me make a note. A tread line. Boom. And then I'm gonna add a ticks. And in this ticks. Well. Hold on. In this text, I'm trying to say. God damn, hold on. Charge. Change of character. Uh, change of character on. Fifteen minute. Not allowing. Not allowing. A new high. That's what I meant, not allowing a new high. So since since this was like the first. Hold on. Damn, bro, I'm trying to I'm trying to talk this shit. That shit crazy. Anyway. Yeah, so since that was the change of character, bro. Ever ever since this high and ever since this low got broke, it never went higher than this, and I'm assume that it's not gonna go higher than that. And I'm just basing that off the small little change of character that just happened, so. I'm gonna draw like a red. Matter of fact, let me get a tread line. I'm gonna draw a red tread line up here. Cause I assume it's not gonna go any higher than that. Assuming they wanna keep going down. I don't know. I don't really have enough like information to determine right now. I'm just gonna assume that this is a change of character, and it's looking like it's wanna keep settling down to this low right here, because. It looked like it could keep going up. Like especially going off of this pattern, like going off of these arrows. It does make sense for it to keep going up, but before they go up, they usually take liquidity. And tomorrow we got news. Yeah, we got news at seven thirty in the morning. So. This is crazy, bro, because I'm gonna get off at like four, I'm gonna get off at four in the morning. I'm gonna take a nap and get right back up at seven, bro. That's how bad I want this shit. But uh. Damn, I don't know if the wind is but is is fucking with the car. Let me get let me get somewhere else for for cool. Damn. Oh, well, I'll stay out here and do it. Anyway, oh. So yeah, bro, and like I said, only trade EU and GU. Let me look at Bitcoin real quick. But I can't really, I can't really put my finger on it. I would be taking just a awkward guess, honestly. Oh, what happened? What happened? God damn. It wasn't even it wasn't even that important going on at the time. What's going on? What's up there?
Uh, my back truck guy, he released the soldiers, he doesn't want to stay at the riverbank, so there's a spot. I got it up. Running, trying to find fuel right there, and having I grabbed beer, so I used about three quarters of what she had next day.
Oh, it's cool, it's cool, it's cool.
I got it up, and it's like, uh, you have a tough one for me, I gotta learn that. It's all up, but. Still gotta let him know.
Yeah, that's cool. Oh, he was like that for you. Okay, okay, okay.
It didn't take him. He goes, two gallons. I did all this for two gallons, like.
It had to be done.
I said, they wanted it to zero of it.
Exactly.
But I'm like, let me go up there and let him know this stuff, we can look and see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
Um, you don't go back there when they look, or it's good.
It's cool, cause I'm gonna go back in, I'm gonna go back there and clean up, and I'm here all night, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure they know it's great.
I said, it may have been. It may have been a gallon, but it sprayed it because I couldn't.
Yeah, the down. Yeah, you good, bro. So appreciate it, man. Alright, I catch you later on, bro. So yeah, bro, uh, let me check. I think my voice still on the call. Yeah, bro, he's still on the call. Let me show my screen again with you. Cool. Okay. So yeah. This Bitcoin situation is crazy, bro. Alright, yeah, let me let me hit this one at a time. Uh. Oh, yeah, I know you made a good a good bag off of that today, boy. I don't even know what happened in this scenario. Yeah, you, yeah, your indicators must have lined up pretty nice on a move like this. But that's a mean breakout though, bro. But that's good though, so uh, to answer your question. Yeah, that's that's how I traded, bro. Like, let me let me go back to uh. For these. Cause I I do this a lot, bro. Matter of fact, I do it so much. That if I hide, will we, if I hide what I did today. And I go to another chart, I swear it's on another chart. Let me hide these. No, not this. Uh. I think it was this one. Alright, let me see. Oh, let me zoom in. Fifteen minutes. Oh, no, that was an ugly one. That went all over the place. You see, you see like two, three fibs, or because I thought it was going one way, and then I tried to catch it the other way, and then I tried to catch it the other way. And I just kind of messed myself up. I think the nineteen is what I'm looking for. Nah, that one missed her too. God damn. Yeah, like I said, bro, the market be giving me a hard time too, and it's not just you. Anyway, uh. Anyway. Let me see. I gotta trade on here somewhere, cause I do this often. Okay, boom. This is a, this is a good one, because this happened, this happened in London. I wouldn't have been up to see it, but if I was trading in London, bro, I definitely would have caught this move. So. This is a good one. Notice how. Like right before London, like at like twelve forty-five, it came back to the market open. It took all this liquidity. This liquidity is small. But it's important, because. This is like the liquidity in Asia session. This is like AUD and NZD. When it's just like staying stagnant, it's not really moving. You got people who bought right here, so that's the liquidity that come back and grab. So when it came back right here, that's important, because that's the change of character, bro. There's a change of character because. Let me show you. In Asian session, bro, it was riding up. But right before London, it started like riding down. So to answer your question about the field, yes, bro, you have to wait until it comes back to your move, because the field can be drawn from up here. To like down here. And it was, it was deep in the fifty. Like, it was deep in the fifty. It would have been cool to like catch it here, catch it here. You know, wherever you, wherever you like, we'll call it. I don't like waiting, because the longer you wait, the more hesitant you get. And the more hesitant you get to press that button. So. Let's just guess, let's just randomly guess. Let's say as soon, let's say as soon as London opened. Which is like right here. I press the button, I press the sale button, boom. Stop loss is like right here, bro. Preferably right here. You you like a good holding number. And then. TP one is like right here, because it's the bottom of the field. And then TP two, it just depends. Usually I do my TP two like. Like recent structure, like this would be a good TP two, because this was like a good strong point before it turned the other way. So my TP two would be like. Right here. And then hold it down, uh. That's it. Like, that's it. Nothing more, nothing less. But my main thing, when I see that, this is why that 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 uh tool that you got, I don't know what it's called, bro. The one that, it's a smart money concept, because that's that's what this is. This is smart money. I'm just using the field at the right time. Because when it broke this yellow line, that's that's a change of character. Well, like I said, it was going one direction, and then it's changed and went the other direction. So when it changed character, this was the bottom of the change. So this bottom of the change is also considered structure. I'm just assuming that if it pulls back deep enough. Then it's going back to break the structure again. And. This structure break is my TP one. This structure on the bigger timeframe over here, that's my TP two. And that's it. And it's a good thing that I use it as my TP. I know it could have went lower, and I could have got more profit, but. You don't know how much lower it could have went, bro, so. I just take what I get and I run with this shit. And then with it going the other way, so you can use fields in like different manners, bro. Like, let's say you missed this move. But. It hit this white structure, right? So since it, so since it hit this white structure, you can assume that it's gonna go up and go the other way. So. You could draw the field like. From this low that it made. All the way till when it came up like right here. This is, this is risky, but sometimes, bro, when I feel like I'm right. I just take it, bro, and it still made sense. It came back at least fifty percent. And my my buys would have been like somewhere in this in this area. To be specific. It it would have been something like that. Somewhere in that range. Like, let's assume. My buy was like. Let's say this this lot, matter of fact, let me change it. This blue line is a seven one eight. This yellow line is the seven eight eight. This red line, that's the eighty percent, because those are actual, you know, that's discount pricing shit. So. Long field. Let's assume I got in at the seven one eight. And my stop loss was like. Right here. I usually like to do like a number like six, because it's a it's a solid number. You don't have to do like six point five or six point eight or shit. And then we. And when you take it up. Cause my goal is to break the field. So you can look at the risk to reward, bro, that's two point six seven. Like, even if you got like a hundred dollars. You already like two hundred sixty-seven dollars like in profit. And that's just holding TP one. Your TP two could probably be, I don't know, your TP two could be up here, but I don't like taking that risk. Sometimes when I see it and I like it, I just take that shit, bro. So yeah. But it's always, it's it's easier said than done, bro. I'm not, I'm not even gonna lie to you. But that's generally how you use the field. That's how I use the field. They do have like fib extensions, like let me see. I found, let me go to another chart. If you draw the field, you draw like that. Yeah, if you do the regular fib, that's usually how it looks, and then you got your extensions like, you know, down here and stuff like that. Some people would like put their TPs like. Down here or something like that. I don't like doing it, because. It's kind of too close to guessing. And I don't want my TPs or my stop loss at a at a random like guessing point on some shit. So yeah, bro. This is the pitch I had sent you earlier. It's the same thing. You got a low point, you got a high point. You feel, you measured, you measured the width. Between those points. It has to come back at least fifty percent. It could come back to six one eight, it can come back to seventy eight, seven one eight, seventy eight, eight, eighty eight percent. And the goal is somebody, it's to make a new high. It it's the field like. Let's say you take this trade. Hello.
Perfect, uh, let me, let me back in, bro.
Alright, but. Uh, let's say you take it and it comes all the way down here, but let's say it keep going. Then you just got stopped out, honestly. Like, you can stay in that trade. But. I got a bad habit of doing that, bro. I don't, I don't like seeing the market go all the way against me like that. So if you feel like it's gonna break the field, you feel like it's not gonna hold, if you feel like it's not pulling back correctly. Then, you know, just just get out. Another thing that I hate, bro. That really be, that really, really be messing me up. Is when like the market is up here. And then, and then I'm probably seeing it like. Go up a little higher and a little higher and a little higher and a little higher, and I don't take profit, and then I know it's just, yeah, that's that's the worst, bro. That's the worst. That's that's exactly why I don't like uh, hold my trade like that. That's exactly why I don't like holding the train like that, bro. But. Yeah, bro, but yeah, if you got a, if you got a question or something, you can say it, bro, cause I can't, you know, I can't hear you and shit. But. Yeah, this is pretty much like just like. This is our raw shit. Matter of fact, I can show you the account, boy. So it it started with, it started off as twenty K, bro. Like. Your glasses? You got them? Oh shit. I was gonna keep it secure for you if I saw it, though. You get it? Alright, Amber. So yeah, um, it started off as a twenty K account. They gave me a one sixty-five credit, bro. That credit is because, um. That's how much I pay for the challenge, and when you pass the challenge, they refund the money back, but I realize that they don't refund it back. They refund it back when they pay, when they pay you out, basically. But at the same time. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Where is it? Hold on, real quick. Alright, man. Uh. You you say your biggest fear, your your biggest fear for what? Uh. Oh, I think you was talking about the trade turning around. Yeah, that's a, that's a big, that's a big L, bro. I'm not even gonna lie, because. I saw a lot of good trades like turn bad because of that shit. But nah, these are my trades, bro, so. You see like. They always stay around like a hundred, two hundred, three hundred. But I be swinging back and forth, bro. Bad day. Good day. Bad day like crazy. A a little good day, a major, major bad day. I think this was fucking, oh. I think this is yesterday morning. But then I had a good day, bro. And overall, I'm still sitting profit. Like, that's crazy. So when they pay me out, bro. Basically, right now, I would be looking at five, five sixty-eight. So. Five sixty-eight, and they need they twenty percent, so. Times point two, I think. One thirteen, so. Five eight six minus one thirteen, that's how much I would be getting back. Like. Right now, I offer these two weeks to just trade. Yeah. Yeah, appreciate that, bro. But I ain't gonna lie, so on this account, bro. You see like right here, where I was three ninety-nine, three ninety-nine, but I was up like a thousand dollars on that account. And I and I fucking, that's when I had these bad days and shit. So I gotta get away from them bad days, bro, and it's really because I've been using that field too much, like. I'd be overusing it, and I'll be using it. So I gotta get away from them bad days, bro, and it's really because I've been using that field too much, like, I'd be overusing it and I'll be using it in the right number. But, um. Yeah, bro, so. It's, 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 it's really just our psychology, bro, like I said, matter of fact, let me show you this, uh, um, the actual like trading with. Yeah, so this was like, this was the challenge, bro, this was the, uh, this is the verification, because they do it in two parts, like, once you pass the challenge, you gotta do the verification. But the challenge, bro, bro, like, I almost lost, like, like no bullshit, bro. Once you hit like eighteen thousand, they counted as a L. And you see how close I was from eighteen thousand, bro, I had like. I think this was eighteen, yeah, eighteen two ninety-four. Bro, I was like one trade away from like losing the whole account and I turned it all the way around, bro, that's crazy. Like for real, you can see it down here where it say best profit. A thousand seven two dollars in a day, right here for like five, day, I hit for like a six times risk reward. Bro, I'm ridiculous, bro, like. Like crazy, so. On this funded account. Yeah, this is how my funded account look, I hate that I fucking came all the way down here. But that's, that, that's why I need to like stop trading so recklessly, I need to like trade carefully and shit, I, I have, I'm basically a funded trader, bro, I can't be trading like. You know, without a plan and shit like that. But yeah, bro, um. That's why I did that redraw button, that was still great. They say I'll be able to redraw in four days, ooh, man, I'm excited, I need to make a new, uh, bank account for that. And I need to make an LLC, I'm trying to make this shit a business, boy, it's crazy. I'm, I'm finally finna get paid out, bro, like, this is, this is, bro, this is unbelievable. Get paid out, damn, after five years of trading, I'm about to get paid out finally, bro. That's crazy, so I actually need to stay with my strategies and shit, bro. But, um. Yeah, that's rea, that's really all I got, bro, um, I got other shit, like, this, this is my login shit. Without my trading stuff, I, I'm gonna turn the phone sideways, so you can see more of me. Yeah, these are all the trades, these are all the trades that I basically did, bro, I got my notes on like what I did, it like for the trade. You know, all that stuff, I need to keep up with it more though, bro, because when I go to official, like something like that, it'll bring up like what I did on that trade. Like this is the trade I caught the other day, and you can see I did the same thing, bro, I drew the field from the low, I took it to the high. And I got in right when it crossed that pink line, because I really had FOMO, honestly, I was kind of nervous that it was gonna, um. Go the other way, and it almost stopped me out, I, I, I shit you not, bro, I almost closed out. But once I saw that green candle and I saw it take off, I was good. I closed out, I, man, when it was up here, bro, I, it was like a thousand dollars of profit. And I was like, I should close out, but I, I kept holding, and when I kept holding, it reversed on me, I closed that right here for like four hundred dollars profit, like god damn. That should be, that should be breaking my heart. But I have, I, I made my log just for that reason, bro, so that way I don't like forgive my good trades and stuff, but, um. Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people don't know the grind, bro, I think at this point, so like I got zoned, bro. And I, I really recorded this call and some shit, because a lot of this shit need to be like. This is how I learned how to start trading, I was just watching like regular people on YouTube. And I was just like listening to their conversations and it was just like raw clear, like, it was just them just teaching, bro. Oh, they wasn't teaching, they was just like talking and shit, so. You know, stuff like that, bro, but, um, yeah, like I said, I already have enough for the, for the market, bro, I got news in the morning at seven thirty. I'm gonna take a nap and get back up, but it kind of makes sense for everything to like fall over, but. It ain't no rush. Here to here. Uh, this is something crazy, I do see it breaking down here. But it kind of makes sense for it to keep going up, but I'm just assuming it wanna keep breaking down, same thing for EU too. I, I assume EU at least coming to here, so. If I draw the field. Let me draw the fifty. If I draw the field from that low to the high, I'm gonna assume that it'll wanna come back down to the field and then go, so this is my trade idea. Um, somewhere under here. Maybe that's cool, and then take off the other way, boom. Same pattern every time, I'm just going into it, you saw. Hell no, bro, I, I, I gotta work for it tonight. I gotta work for it tonight, yeah, so ain't no way I'm going to that class in the morning. Yeah, you can go in whenever and shit, but nah, but I'd have been here, man, I went to that class and then came here, I'm gonna get off around three, four in the morning. I'm getting the fuck out of here, bro, yeah, I'll do all that shit when it's like. Yeah, yeah, I'm out. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna do it when I can. So yeah, bro. Man, that cool, but shit, brought up, bro, that I understand that I am on the phone. Like god damn, anyway, um, so yeah, I expect for it to like drag back under here. It doesn't have to do that, but at the same time, I'm not gonna take a trade, because. The worst thing I can do, bro, is think that it's gonna go up and I take a buy right here, and then it go all the way through my buy. And it makes sense, because it's still liquidity right here, like, when we talk about liquidity, bro. Think about like how they taught us how to trade when we first started, they taught us to like draw a trade line, you know, from like here. To like here, and if it break that trade line, then it's going the other way, so a lot of people are like trading like these bounces off this trade line. So these are retail traders, so I'm basically, I'm trying to trade with the banks, basically, bro, if I see some shit like. Let me, let me show you what I see, bro. We're gonna mark these lows. This is a low, this is a low, this is a low, this is a low, this is a low. If I see the market do some shit like. Break right here. And then pull back, and then break right here, and then pull back, those are my entries, bro, because remember these pullbacks. That's fifty percent of that, that's a, that's a, that's a good, that's a good, good trade to take, this right here. Fifty percent of the pullback, that's a good trade to take. And I'm trying to take these pullback. Remember, I'm trying to take these pullbacks down to the original field. Which is like down here. You get, you know what I'm saying? So yeah, bro, but. That's about it, bro, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty much done, uh, I really need to go hop in the work truck and take me a little nap or something, Sam, I can't even take a nap. Fuck it, but you get the gist, bro, so I'mma be. I don't know, are you gonna be, yeah, before you hang up, are you gonna be up like on London or you, you going to sleep, cause you gotta get up in the morning or something? Alright, man, uh. I might be up for London. I should be up for London, I don't, I don't really even see why I would go to sleep if I'm, I'm doing the straight shit. Alright, but yeah, if you're not tired, bro, I'll send out another call for London and you ain't gotta like, you know, like type of shit. But I'll figure it out, I'm trying to figure out how to do this whole thing and like run these cars and stuff, but. Yeah, appreciate you for, uh, you know, tuning in, so like that, I'mma save this, bro, so that way I'mma send it to you, that way if you wanna like review it, so you can watch on their own time and shit, but. I'll let you go, bro, sure. That way I can give me a nap in or something. That's a bit there, bro, I can't wait on.